...the highlights here. They have obviously workplace policies and how you relate to your coworkers and that sort of things. So they make it a responsibility to review those things, review any policies for community relationships. To ensure the use of social media, specifically content posting, make sure that anything you put into their personal pages or opinions is consistent with the policies. Expressing only personal opinions, views do not represent the most... They make it clear. Don't give any perception that the views you're presenting represent the hopes of the city, your fellow workers, residents, or vendors. Refrain from posting content that could show poor judgment or reflect poorly on you or the city. Social media websites are not deformed or empty. Personal complaints are not supervises, coworkers, or the organization. Adhere to one of their policies or chapters which defines a policy of public records. Any records are subject to public records law. Any posts made on your personal social media account could be subject to public records law. Any posts made to your personal social media account could also potentially violate the exemption statutes. So in other words, when you talk about internal social media, Facebook page for the city and you're publishing information, you're covered pretty much by the protections and insurance you're providing as an elected official. You start posting opinions or perceptions in your personal... You may be stepping outside of those and opening yourself up to exposure, litigation, or whatever you need to cover. That's what I want to draw. What I'm really just motioning is, start the discussion. Do we want to implement a guideline or a policy of how you're... That's what I'm...
Vice Mayor, I'm gonna chime in and support you here. We don't participate on the social media circuit, but we do read a lot of the stuff, and some of it is just horrible. I was at EMO today to survey all the elected officials in the room. The first question they asked was, "How many people make nothing?" I raised my hand. There was one other person in the room. That was it. "We make nothing for doing this." Everybody up here except for the two individuals on the end make nothing. Yet we're just routinely destroyed by individuals who know nothing, who don't do their homework, who don't participate, who don't help the city at all. And I'm gonna go a step further without naming a name, okay? There's an individual in the city who's related to someone I'm sitting on this day, it's right now. And that person posted a lot, a lot of bad stuff. That has generated three complaints to me in one week, two of which found their way to Fred Riley, who has to now investigate them. A proposition came forward. "Mr. Mayor, why don't we pass a law that no one can live in the city and hold a job for the city?" So if you think the people in the audience in the city aren't reading this stuff, they're reading it. And they're tired of it, a lot of people. They want us to take action. I don't know that I'm bringing... I can't bring a motion anyway. I don't know that that motion's ever gonna see the light of day. I don't know if it will or it should. But people are seeing this stuff. And our city is being judged by this stuff. Other people read this stuff. Other people know what's going on. We pull ourselves out to be a premier city, although premier cities don't act like that. People up on this board are giving a lot of their free time. They don't deserve it. You can come to the meetings and disagree with us. No one's ever stopped from... Anyone can disagree. But, you know, name-calling and everything else, it's not right. You wouldn't do that in a parking lot with me. I know you wouldn't. And they do it here. They do it all the time. I think we need a policy. I think it needs to cover individuals. I know you have the First Amendment right, but there's also ethical concerns. And I was at EMO this week, and I talked with people without this very problem. And I was told that there may be ethical implications. And so more stuff for me to investigate, and more stuff that I might have to run by legal, and more legal bills. This stuff is costing the city money. And I can't ignore it when somebody brings something to my attention and says, "You have a problem here and there." I can't stop people from posting. But we have to do something about this, okay? Council members, I don't think, are on these sites, but I do see some board members on the sites. They are making posts. Council members' spouses are making posts. And all of this leads to a very bad perception of the city. If you have your First Amendment right, feel free to exercise it. We're not gonna curtail that. But there's repercussions to all these posts that are going on. And we're gonna have to deal with it some way or another. This board has the right to pull people back off of committees that we put you on. And maybe that has to start to be exercised too. Because if you're not gonna support the council, then maybe we put the wrong person on the board. And we don't put you on to begin with if you don't support the council. So that's my point. I'm wholly behind you. Vice Mayor?
I would like to say that I think we are walking a very fine line here. People have a right to voice their opinions. Social media is the way people are doing it nowadays. Have been for many, many years. As far as, you know, people responding and stuff, that's their right too, whether they have an employee or a spouse that works here or not. As long as the city elected officials aren't, then I don't see any issues with them because that would be a violation of all of our citizens' First Amendments, right? When we start telling them what they can and cannot discuss, I mean seriously. But we've all taken ethics training. We've all taken the Sunshine Ball training. So I believe we know why we need to develop a policy. To my understanding, and maybe our attorney can clarify, this is all pretty much covered in those two areas. Is that not correct? The social media policy and the reference to public records and all of that in the ethics and Sunshine Ball training?
I'll answer your question in a very specific way. I wouldn't do anything in a city policy that replicates anything that's already existing in the Sunshine Ball. It's just regenerative. From that standpoint, I wouldn't do anything. If anybody's going on a social media site and it's two council members and they're exchanging ideas, then the policy doesn't mean anything. You've already violated Florida law. And you don't need to go further than that. I'll make this comment because I was gonna make it at some point anyway. The slideshow that Vice Mayor Gunn provided, much of it is about doing a policy for the city's social media. And that, I think, is a good idea with the caveat that somebody's already mentioned, which is, the city does not participate in Facebook or other interactive-type social media sites. Someday you may do that. The problem with participating in an interactive site is then you have to be careful about who's going to moderate that and who's basically going to be the filter if things get out of hand. But that's not present here. You have a website, and to my knowledge, that's your social media footprint at this point in time. I think it's fine to have a policy that relates to that because it gives parameters on what channels do you need to go through to put something on the site. One of the things that's not been mentioned yet tonight, although it's been mentioned in other meetings I've attended, is the 88 compliance things. So that to me is a given if you're going to establish a policy for the city. So that's the first part of my comment. The second part is, I have, I would say, some pretty severe reservations about doing a policy that addresses... The policy would not address citizens. They get to do what they want. The policy would address city council members or your staff. And I will tell you, I have a severe reservation about that because immediately you implicate First Amendment rights. You just... As elected officials, you're public officials. And under the law, public official, there's a high standard for what somebody can say about you. And that means most elected officials pretty quickly develop a thick skin and become oblivious to some of the kind of comments that are made in the public forum about them. But I would tell you, if you proceed or want to go ahead and craft a policy, my approach to it would be, find somebody else in the state of Florida that's already crafted that specific type of policy. I think that's always a good starting point because you don't wanna reinvent the wheel on this type of thing. And this is one of these policies. You can spend quite a bit of time coming up with the structure of it and what specifically you wanted to create the policy's for. So in a nutshell, those are my initial thoughts, although I'd be happy to answer any of the questions you have.
I do have a question. We have our chair for Board of Adjustments moderates one of these websites. I think that's a conflict with our charter. And that's brought it up numerous times, and it's never been addressed. What would your opinion be of that?
The chairman of what committee?
Board of Adjustments.
Okay.
Moderates the Nextdoor app.
Okay.
So she dictates what is allowed to be said and not said. And it's in direct conflict and makes direct comments about council decisions.
Well, I'm not informed enough about what type of things are said, so I'll not draw a form and distinct line until I know better what specifically is said. The closer somebody that's on a committee or on the council gets to discussing issues that are gonna be before the committee, the more fraught with peril their actions are going to be if it's stuff that is gonna come before the committee.
I just think that's where the policy comes into play. I don't... Look, I'm not in favor of creating policies. I'm not in favor of this at all. But when we have boards and councils and committees that are... You know, we've got residents who've stepped up to these positions. Will they need to be held to the same standard we are? And they are not being held to the same standard and causing conflict. And I think it's an issue. And that's where I think that this policy comes into play. Not so much for residents, not so much. But if you're gonna be on a board, if you make that commitment, then you need to have thick skin. You need to back out of social media. And you need to... I think her moderating Nextdoor app, and I've said it over and over to city manager, it's a problem. She either needs to step down from one of the positions. It's not how I feel.
Again, I would be remiss if I made a very formal decision based on just what you said. I would tell you this, it's somewhat of a... It's not a direct response to what you're asking, but I'll tell you, in the seven years I've been the city attorney for another city, I not once have said anything on Facebook about the fact that I am the city attorney there. I don't discuss anything, period. I have no discipline in that. And to me, that's... I don't need a policy to make me do what I do. And, you know, that's just the way I approach it. There's another way I look at it too. I don't need the complications on it. And to me, what you're describing is somebody that's making a choice to unfortunately complicate their life a little further when it comes to serving on a committee and then being a private citizen. And I'm not making a decision one way or the other. I'm just saying, it complicates things. And sometimes in life, you need fewer complications, not more.
I just wanna watch this debate. Is there anyone who has not spoken on this? I think Dave has.
I haven't spoken yet. I'm a little blown away by this topic tonight, but I do understand why it's happening. Yes, I have seen numerous comments completely out of control. On the other hand, sometimes feeding a fire is combating fire with fire, and it just makes the fire grow larger. And I think to a certain extent, some of that has happened, and we are responsible for it as a council for the way that we respond to very negative comments from the public. On the other hand, I also feel like, now that I've seen this list of public records requests, that internally, we've had some problems. Where there's a lot of distrust within all the boards, the committees, and the council. I think we've just... We've had some issues. Taking, we are First Amendment because we're serving with no monetary gain whatsoever and basically using a lot of our time, it's not my idea of a good idea. Again, I do understand why this is coming up, but I think that as a council, we are maturing. This has been one of the better meetings that I've attended since we started this term. And I'd like to thank everyone here for remaining calm and just getting through this meeting with a cool level ahead. Can we do anything about the public? I think not. As far as what I've seen, and I do monitor Facebook, I do monitor Nextdoor, what I've seen is nothing from us. I think everyone here has the ultimate self-control, and we have all been very well-disciplined as far as social media goes. If persuading someone on an upcoming vote involves my kid Waters being... Well, so be it, but I'm not pulling back. So if it turns to some sort of a policy that basically says, "You need to stop using Facebook," that's it. I will resign me in it. So just some things to think about. And again, I don't think it's necessary that we actually have to have a policy because the policy would only be written for people that are already thinking and doing it. That's all I have.
I'd like to just add, I agree with Dave, but I agree with everybody. I don't think we need a policy because I think everybody up here is following the rules. I guess the question comes into about board members of the boards. And as far as my understanding, Sunshine, if they're like a Board of Adjustment member is talking about something about the festival or park and rec, even though they're both talking, it doesn't seem like to be a Sunshine violation because they're not talking about anything that would come before the Board of Adjustments. Is that correct? If they're talking about something... If two Board of Adjustment members are talking about something related to a park and rec board item, that's not a violation of Sunshine. It has nothing to do with the Board of Adjustments. Is that correct?
They're talking about Tampa, February's baseball. Here about issue.
Right. But what about if it's a city issue but not on their board?
Then you just keep getting closer and closer.
So it's ground upon, okay. So maybe we need to set... And maybe it's something that the members of the board, they know they can't talk to each other for the Sunshine, but maybe they don't realize that extends to social media and that they also need to be silent on Nextdoor. But trust me, I mean, I've seen these negative posts, and it's, I'm sure, hard for all of us to bite our tongue and not post like we want to, but they need to have, I guess, the same control. And I do agree with Jody Shirley that it is a conflict of interest for that board member to be a moderator. And, you know, before, she would just chime in and give information, like, "Oh, the date of that event is this date." But now she's starting to put her own personal opinions in, and I think that's where the conflict is starting to come in.
Does the council wish to have... And I'm not gonna... Or ask... You know, I have the power to ask this myself, but I'm not gonna do it without the councils. The council can vote on this. The individual in question, Mr. Riley, is the individual I was speaking with you about when Vice Mayor Gunn and I were at these article of cities, we were at the same presentation. And that presentation was about where the moderator was supposed to stay neutral. That was the one I spoke to you about when I said, "Is there any law?" I couldn't find the law. You couldn't find the law. The guy who did it wasn't an attorney. I don't know where he got it from. I mean, cite it. But there's other implications over here. Jody Shirley has seen it. I've seen it. I think everyone else has seen it. Now, again, citizens, we're gonna spend your money. Mr. Riley's not doing this for free. So this is the upshot of all this nonsense that has... You know, that goes on in our premier city. Do you wish Mr. Riley to look into this matter? We know who the individual is. She's the chairman of the board. Her name is Martha Vasquez. She's the chairman of the Board of Adjustment. I don't know that she's done anything wrong, but that's what we need you to tell us. And if she has, we can recall her. I believe I have never looked at what the removal rules are. I know there's removal rules in our ordinance and charter to take people back if we want to.
I would recommend you do something different. Let me tell you what that is. Is you have to bear in mind with the committees and the boards that you have, they're citizens. They... By participating, I would argue, they are an elected official in some sense, although they're not an elected official. So that somewhere, there's a distinction. But the thing that I would urge you to consider is, there may be times when two well-intentioned citizens have met, for instance, and exchange ideas on Nextdoor, Facebook, or something like that. And rather than embarking on an investigation, the better course of action would be to advise, maybe advise them where they are in potential peril from an ethical standpoint, and inform them enough so that they can mend the air... The potential error of their ways. I think that's a much less costly endeavor than launching an investigation. And I, you know, it also gives people the benefit of the doubt. And, you know, I will tell you, I've done this for quite a while. There are times that good-intentioned people make mistakes, and that doesn't mean that you get burned at the stake or have an ethics complaint filed against them, and have that run its course. The reality of ethics complaints is, everybody here is an adult, and they've gone through the ethics training. And if they've made a mistake, then they run the risk that they're going to have a consequence due to the mistake. But I again will say, well-intentioned people sometimes do make mistakes, and the better course of actions to not burn them at the stake over a technical mistake made a month ago is to inform them where they may be making a mistake in the future and let them remediate their actions. Right? I think you would get a better result out of that and absolutely spend four less minutes.
Council, is that the action you wish to take, what you just recommended?
Are we ready for a second move? I'd like to follow up on some of that.
I have a quick question. Do they take the ethics course, members of the board?
Yeah, supposedly. They're supposed to get some briefings on it. And that should be part of the orientation for this finance board. They are covered by some shit. The common sense is not so common after all. That's a great expression I've heard. And while this council has not stepped across the line, previous council did. There were members, documented, and I can pull up the references and dates and times of discussions, where people signed off their opinion or whatever with council member or vice mayor or mayor or whatever. And I agree with you. You, as a little trained professional, would have the common sense to know where that line would seem to be. But I will say again, common sense is not so common after all. That's the passage to this. When I opened up this discussion, I talked about internal versus external. The internal is whether there's a policy. External is... And I made it clear, we're not looking to step on anybody's toes to make a policy. We're trying to set some guidelines for civility and propriety and some of this stuff. And so far as the benchmarking goes, guess what? More and more municipalities are coming up with guidelines on this stuff. And it not only addresses the internal stuff, it sets some guidelines for propriety in the external and on your personal websites, that sort of thing. Again, guidelines, not script. That's all I'm trying to be to is, is thank you. We... I brought this before as a motion. Whether it goes to a pause or not, I don't care. Because the real intent here was to have this honest discussion among council members and drag this issue out into the light of day to say, "Hey, you know, there's... There is an issue here that certainly doesn't align with our goals and our strategic plans, which is ingenuine community and foster communications between the residents and the city council and city staff." My point today, where this goes?
I wanna be mindful of... I don't want this to turn into our speeding discussion that goes on for two hours. There's nothing here for an action item at this point. As Vice Mayor said, he's brought this out to the light here, the light of day for discussion, for follow-up. We are not going to solve this tonight, so we can talk about it all we like. I think a lot of valid points have been made. We're gonna be calling work session. My recommendation would be to continue this discussion. I do think it has validity on each side, so we need to kinda get to the bottom of this. No one's looking to trample into First Amendment rights, but we have rights too as a city, and we have rights as this board, and we can exercise those rights. There are certain jobs that you take, and you... You know, your First Amendment rights as an employee are not... You can't say what you wanna say about your employer. Try it for any of you who work for someone. Go tell your boss what you think about him. You don't have that First Amendment, right? Okay? Don't try it. Really don't. It won't work out well. So I do think that we should move this off, but an item came up as... And again, it's not a motion. This is just a correction. I have the right to, as part of the direction, to have the city attorney do things. The city manager can do that, but we as a council can also ask him to do it. It doesn't have to come as a motion. So if there is an issue that has been brought up, it's a serious issue. I don't know if it's an issue that has any validity in terms of actionability, but it's been brought up. It's been brought up in the past. Sounds like it hasn't been addressed. Council, the legal council has said to us that he believes a conversation and talking would be the way to solve this. Do we wish to empower him to do that tonight, or do you wanna hold this under further consideration and pull off? And then we'll move on to the next item.
I would like to suggest that one of us, and I don't even mind taking the lead on it, just contact her and ask her, "Do you realize what you're doing? You're making a mistake. At least we feel like you're making a mistake, and maybe you should decide which one is more important to you." I mean, we have these conversations with people and other committees and boards all the time about various topics. And, you know, I think it's taking it to an extreme to wait and let her hang herself without first approach here because I don't know if any of us have ever done that.
I just think...
I think I've asked Lynn to do that number of occasions and not, you know, just to say two things with her position is, she's not qualified to hold the chair position. If you've sat through one of those meetings, you'll see that Mike Kelly runs the meetings, that she requires his support quite a bit. So that's the first issue.
I think we've got one where you're not supposed to talk in any of them.
Okay. What, I'll say, okay. So that... So I've talked to Lynn about this in the past, and I just think that I think it would make sense that Lynn maybe make the call and just explain to her. And I think that I think that what Lynn put in the packet of this slide presentation is a good slide presentation, and maybe to share that with Martha would be helpful and let her make a decision where she... You know, if she wants to step down from moderating or look at her board position or whatnot.
I'm just gonna suggest that we take Mr. Riley up on his offer. He's neutral party. He works with the city. Everybody else has best interest in this, we're council members. Mr. Riley's the city manager. This way, no one is exerting any undue pressure. In addition, when it comes... And I just sat through 24 hours of trainings, so I'm kinda brainwashed at this point, but when your legal counsel for the city tells you to do something and you differ from his approach, you're pretty much on your own. It doesn't mean you have to follow what he does.
Right, I was waiting for you to say that.
But you better have a good reason for... You know, if someone sues you or someone comes after you, you're gonna have a hard time if you didn't take his advice and it turns out that he was right. So my point would be, he's offered to do it. I don't think it's gonna be a long conversation. I've seen him in action with people. I like his style, and that's where I would like to say. But I want... It's not a formal vote. It's just a consensus. to say, but I want, it's not a formal vote, it's just a consensus. If you want him to do it, that's fine. If you want the city manager, that's fine, so.
Well, can I also add that I think it would be beneficial, maybe just a email sent from him to all the board members and letting them know what the rules are or the sunshine law or that they, when they were interacting on Nextdoor, they could be violating, so, because I don't think they know. I really don't think anybody knows. We know, because we had to do that ethics course and it got drilled into our head and we're afraid of, you look at each other, we guys sometimes, but, but I don't think they know. They have no idea, they're like, well, I'm not elected, I just got voted in and I'm just barely make a meeting. They don't have meetings very often, so I don't think they know. So we need to inform them.
I suspect that Miss Vasquez does not even know that she is interacting with just one law.
I agree. I agree.
How do we resolve this, folks? How many people are in favor of having Fred do this? One, two, three, four, five, six?
Information.
Okay. Fred? You're in favor of it?
This goes to your other boards. I, I can also write a very concise memo that says, as a board member, here are the things that you're obligated to do. Because there are some things that are obligated to do. And that way, you know, you can organize a meeting and do all that stuff. You can also do a one to two page memo and give them a list of things and also leave it open to them to ask questions if they have it.
City Manager Reeves and I were speaking in his office today and, um, some people took, when they, uh, got, um, elected, a course they, they worked and he said, you know, there's a, and I knew this, there's a course out there for free on the Attorney General site. Um, perhaps you can direct them to that free course, they can take that course themselves at any point they want on the sunshine law and the ethics law. And that uses the same information that we all got sent through the four hour courses they're not required to do. I don't know if they're required, I don't think they are because they're not elected, but it's really not a bad idea because they are held at the same rules. So, uh, if you can give them that link, it doesn't cost the city anything at that point. You don't have to sit there solarizing with 200 pages sunshine man. That's great. Thank you. Okay, are we closed on this at this point? Okay, I'm going to move on then to the quarterly board reports. The Board of Adjustment and the Planning Board has no report. We do have the Park and Recreation Board, Joe Vanscoy is here representing them. Is Vanscoy?
Good evening. Um, I just wanted to give her, I gave a brief statement earlier, so, um, thanking my board and so forth and some comments that were made from our sponsor, our booth rental paper. Uh, I think the, um, considering that, you know, we had, um, clover boat races on one end and the, and the rocks had their hippie fest, I think we had a great turnout of three to 350 people for the fall festival. Um, I think, uh, pretty much went down without a hitch, um, and, and it was very well received by the people that, uh, came out for the event. Um, the council, I want to thank you again for your participation in. And I personally want to thank, uh, Rob Hocke, Mark Ben, Mr. Mayor Manzo, um, Lynn Gunn, um, Jody Shirley for her help as well, and, uh, Dave Gaddis. I really want to appreciate, I really appreciate your help with, um, the event. I want to also take time to say thank you to, um, Colm Riffer and, and the city clerk, Patty Gentry. And I don't know her last name, but please call her a thank you from us. She's the one that took in all the applications and so forth. Um, Patty relayed all information and so forth and worked with me on some of the flyers. Um, the city manager worked with us on some of the issues that we had to address, uh, in reference to the festival. Um, I think it was a great learning experiment for this city, I think for future events. I think that the fact that we addressed every kind of safety issue that might be able to occur, well, I can't say everyone, but pretty much anything that could occur from the layout of, of the festival, how we positioned the officers, how we positioned the emergency personnel, um, at every entrance of, of the event, uh, was something to be said for this board. Um, the parking that we set up, the plan that we set up was a great thing. The contracts that we addressed, that we needed to have to fulfill the sponsorship agreements, the, um, booth rentals, um, the plans that we addressed with that. Um, the, the layout of, of marking off areas so people were in and out, the, the format that we sent to all our booth rental people and where they had to park after they came in, they set out, set up and had to leave before children or any, um, pedestrians entered the area was another thing that our, uh, board addressed and, uh, I think we did a great job with that. Um, I definitely want to thank my co-chair, again, Red Shaw, he, he did a terrific job and my other board members, um, they did a terrific job. We worked together as a team, that's the key with the board and I personally want to say, I feel like we have the best board in this city, no offense to any other boards. But, um, we worked together as a team to accomplish the goal that was set up by our board and, uh, by the council, what they wanted, um, to see happen. And, um, it worked. The other thing, so let me just go move on, I can't address the money issue we have.
We have the money, I'll, I'll give you a report on that, we have it, it's been distributed to yous.
Yeah, yeah, there's some discrepancy. I just received it in my, um, packet as I'm sitting there. We actually, we received more money than that. So I will address that with the city manager and if the council permits, I'd like to bring that in front of the council when we come next month, the next council meeting, that way we can give a proper report. Because I just received that tonight, just in the middle of my meeting, so, um, I would like to give a proper accounting for that. I'll meet with the city manager and we'll address this, if that's okay with you all.
Counsel, any objections? We want to get a proper accounting. Right now, just so everyone knows, um, shows a 17, $123 profit from this, which would fund more than every event that we anticipated, but it looks like there could possibly be some other issues, so.
There, there is a little more profit. There's a little more profit. And there was a little discrepancy on, on, on a cost of something, but it was still a little more profit. So we just want to make sure that anything that goes on the record is proper and.
There's no objection and proceed with it. Okay, let us know on the next, next regular meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, the other thing I wanted to go over was, um, Vice Mayor Glenn Gunn came tonight and talked to our board about the strategic plan. Now, I've known about the strategic plan for a long time because I've been attending, but, you know, it was great for him to come in, I want to thank him, to come in and talk to our board about how our board fits into that plan and to educate us, okay? Um, some of the things that we've been doing, trying to address, helping with revenue sources for the city as the Park and Recreation Board, is, you know, passing out the flyers that we did at our event, we've done it at other things to try to generate, uh, revenue by bringing out this hall. Uh, we talked about, um, we have talked about raising money through grants, addressing the issues of some of the things that the mayor needs to do, um, in order to generate more revenue. So these are some things that our park board is going to be working on in the next couple months, um, to try to generate revenue, to do these, um, upgrades and maybe our parks and other things, um, with very little, uh, cost to our city. Um, the other thing we want to talk about is the October 26th, um, trunk or treat. If you've not received a flyer by now, please see me, um, I'll give you one. We're still looking for people to decorate the cars and participate in handing out candy to children. We're only going to allow 20 car spots. So if, if you look at the flyer, it's one hour, you come in, one hour prior to the event, we shut the, the street down. Our plan for this, and it's been voted on by my board, is to shut it down one hour prior to that when the cars coming in, everybody parks in the city hall parking lot that's, that's coming to trick or treat. The kids will meet at the end of 9th Street where it's boarded off, you know, so that we can come through the cars and they will actually parade up this, up the park, come around in front of the judges, which I'm, that'll be my next thing, the second, um, parade and then head back down. They will all hold numbers, so you won't know, the parents will not be walking with the, with the children, so that way there's no, you know, no one knows whose children they are. It's, it's only a matter of that one little span there, okay? That way it's voted on fairly, okay? Then, um, they will proceed to do their trick or treat and by the time they come back around, we will have our decision, we will, we will award them the trophies that we have. Um, we cut the hours down, it's down to two hours. I'm hoping that it doesn't take even two hours, but we have to, have to have a little bit of padding time. But anyhow, so the flyer gives strict instructions on there, the do's and the don'ts to the parents, anybody wanting to participate and a contact information on there and, um, it's a, it's a no-brainer, so. And, and hoping the council will, um, participate in this, I am looking for some council members to please be judges, um, for this event, if you're willing to do that or hand out candy. Um, I've already had a couple volunteer, um, we would gladly take those volunteers. Um, we have, don't forget, we have the Christmas holiday celebration coming up in December with Santa for the kids and that's on the 7th. The only, the only thing we have not set down on that date was the time. I thought it would be good because it is the holiday season, I want to include the council in the decision of the time of day that it occurs. So I'm, I'm, I'm hoping it's not going to be around meal time because the kids are going to get to decorate and cook and go, you know, that's why I say, and get the picture of Santa at home. So, but that being said, I am open for suggestions as to what time we think, uh, would be good for that. I was thinking personally about 2:00 in the afternoon.
I was thinking like 10:00 at the end, they're doing breakfast in the lunch. I thought probably as well, because the little moon, I was going to say 11, but yeah, it is something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, doing the morning.
Okay, so is, is everybody good with time?
10:30.
10:30.
Tomahawks.
Is everybody good with 10:30?
Let us, let us guess it.
That's just not a one person. That's just not a one person, so. Because we did not, when, when the council approved this event, they did, they didn't give me a time and we didn't discuss a time, so I just, I'm circling back around to make sure that we're good with that. Okay, does anybody have any questions for me?
Questions, we have our comments. I had a lot of fun. I dumped two people. I hope they don't get back.
There's always next year.
Um, my comments are, for those that didn't go, um, I thought it was very well planned out. I mean, the fact that she had three different bounce houses that were three different age of her, it was great. And you had volunteer chaperones in each one, so it wasn't just kids running amok. The free hot dogs, I think everybody enjoyed. The entertainment was outstanding, especially since some of our own Bellerin Beach children sang, performed multiple times. We had a Bellerin Beach adult residents that were singing and I had so many comments because I was, uh, my booth was closer to the music about just how impressed they were with the entertainment. You already addressed how you had all the security strategically planned, um, and laid out, which I thought was ingenious. Um, I just love the fact that there were residents there promoting their businesses, their, their special crafts, um, their, their artistic ability and it just gives us as a community a chance to support each other by either like, you know, some businesses I didn't even know were Bellerin Beach residents and now I know, I'd be more inclined to use them as opposed to a competitor. Um, I know, as Alexandra said, she was extremely excited. My kids were excited, they keep asking me when the next festival is, so I hope we can have another one. And, you know, there was even opportunities for, I noticed the garden club members were going around handing out garden club pamphlets, trying to get members to join. So it was beneficial for many Bellerin Beach residents and I thought it was a fantastic event and it was well planned and I thought it was well received, so I enjoyed it. So thank you, everybody, for your hard work. Thank you.
June, I'm going to commend you and your board, um, taking what started off as some hot dogs for the 4th of July and turning it into something that just made our city look so good, um, and really showed the best in our city. Um, I was there, I was dumped, Dave Gaddis spent about 50 bucks and still never got me dumped, but it was okay, it was fun. I got him, but I think I cheated because of the hoop. The bar was, the bar was rigged and he wound up going down, but we all had fun. You know, there was no differences, there was none of this, you know, you live here and you live there, everybody was a community, it was what this was about, to bring us all together. People met neighbors, people met friends, people found out that people had businesses, deals were made. It was everything you could expect in a small town, small city festival. You did an outstanding job. Everyone in your board did an outstanding job and everyone that volunteered and looked at Pam Gunn, she was there all day. Uh, George's wife, she's in a wheelchair, she was there all day working, okay? Um, it, you know, it brought out the best in our community. Tom Luger, he's one of our neighbors a couple blocks away, he's a long-term resident, he demanded to be in this event. We were actually past the deadline, he was the one who had the crabs, uh, the crab cakes and the beautiful art, or with the, uh, with the wine bottle corks. Um, this is a guy who's going to give all of that money to charity. He doesn't want the money, he didn't do it for him. This is what makes the community like this great. I, I was, I'm always proud of our community, but when I see something like this, I see the, the great people that we have in the city. You knocked it out of the park. You hit grand slam, oh, right. Thank you so much to everyone that was involved in this. Counsel, um, if this doesn't deserve a merril commendation for all the volunteers, nothing does, um, so I would like to award that at the next meeting, I have no objections. Is there anyone who would object? And we're going to put that on the consent agenda, you guys were tremendous. I hope you do it again, uh, for everything you went through. Thank you to everyone with this, too. Um, there's people here in the city, uh, from our, from our city staff, uh, to the, Fred Riley, I don't know how many contracts the poor guy had to read, but, um, and he got dumped for that, um, he paid the price. Um, so we, uh, we had a great time and thank you for making this city a great, great, uh, a great experience that no one's ever going to forget. Great job. Hold on.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention too, that some feedback we got from the garden club, which is our only city association here in the city, by the way, and I think we should help try to keep promoting that as well. They, they were so thrilled that we invited them, okay? We, we got the 10 people to donate table chairs for them for the event, we got a neighbor to put a canopy up for them. And then the city manager, um, gave us a list so we could sign up on the city details and so they, they actually were, they are manning that at their tables as well, so they were, they were doing the city's work as well. So, and we gave them flyers, um, for the hall rental and they were, they were manning that. We gave them flyers for the trunk or treat. So, so they, they were giving that with their time at the same time, so, you know, put my hats off to them as well. And yes, I want to say thank you to the city attorney, he's a good sport and, uh, he dumps well. And then, yes, definitely Pam Gunn, thank you very much. Uh, she, she, she was there the whole time and, and she was never without saying, um, to me constantly, she was saying, can I help with this? Do you need that? Do you, can I do something else? So thank you to her, I really appreciate that, so.
Thank you, June.
Thank you.
And I just, I forgot, I'm seeing Mrs. Ayers, thank you for that beautiful picture and then getting into the newspaper and I'm going to be outside, I brought my Sharpie, I'll be signing autographs if anyone wants to sign, you know, but thank you, that was great. And thank you for your, your publicity and the great writing that you did and Wayne, thank you for, for publicizing this event. I think we had a great turnout and a lot of that deserves, uh, your credit because you publicized this and we didn't have an advertising budget, so you did a great job for us, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Wayne. We really appreciate.
Any other questions or comments for June? Anyone in the audience? I think we've covered most everything. Okay, thank you so much. We now go to the city attorney's report, if he has one.
You're no longer doing the verbatim, um, minutes, correct?
What?
You're no longer doing the verbatim minutes.
I never did verbatim minutes, but no, I'm not.
Okay, you don't understand what I'm going to say there.
Oh, no.
I thought you said drunk tank.
For those of you who weren't there, and I am not a great baseball player, my brother got that, I came up to Fred and I said, you're going down, my friend. I missed wildly on the first throw, I missed low on the second one, I hit the third one smack in the middle of a red dot. But Fred is a good sport, he's, he's a great guy and, um, thank you. And I just want to tell you, oh, you're a great guy, you're a great attorney. Um, I've worked with you on several items now, you've worked for this festival, you're doing a great job. I really liked your approach. I really liked your approach, you know, the approach that you piloted tonight about, you know, Sunshine Act is not a club. It's not something to destroy a career or ruin a person's professional license. It hasn't always been the case in the city that that's the way it was used. There was a lot of threats in the past may. And you are taking a proper approach and a refreshing approach. I commend you for that. We just want to get people into compliance if there's a problem with anything, ethics, sunshine or anything like that. It doesn't mean you can rob the bank or rob the city, that's a problem. But if you have a minor violation, you know, six months ago, we just want to get that straightened up so it doesn't become a problem for anyone. Because you can do, but thank you. You're doing a great job in my opinion, so. City manager.
Mayor, council, uh, there's a couple of things that I left at your thing to take with you. Uh, one of them is about Patty put together a report for all the public records requests that have been made since the first of the year. And, uh, in talking to city attorney, he got us a copy of the new city public records policy. And I think it's time we have a policy because it's becoming cumbersome for Patty to, uh, you know, time wise. When you see a list, uh, it's two pages long of public records requests since the first of the year. So, uh, that's something that we'll talk about in the future. And, uh, you know, if you don't mind, I'll ask to get with the city attorney and we'll work on something to bring to you as a policy. Just a quick update on the underwriting project of Bellview Estates Island. They, they came last week out and started taking the power over, making the transformers hot. Today, they started transferring the power over. Actually, I know Mar's house was transferred and the contractor's there to do the overhead stuff also. So, uh, what initially was going to be the plan, we're going to do the underground first. Uh, they were out last week, but they didn't spend the whole week there. But they're progressing and, and I think that process is going along fine. Hopefully, if everything goes right, the only, we're just right now is probably Bright House. And, uh, we'll get the poles down sometime late November and then get the rest of the street lights up. Except, except at your house and, uh, Life Mary Dunn's house. We got some work to get over there. And, and a pedestal, one each one.
How many do you think is the deal?
Take two. Uh, the Third Street, uh, Third through Sixth Street project, uh, we had our kickoff meeting with the contractor on the thirtieth. And, uh, he, he did well. Third, Third and Fourth Street on Friday. They're going to start on the curb work and, uh, then we'll move forward with the, uh, does the boxes are ordered for the drainage things that we're doing on that project. I've given you a copy. We used a consultant to rework the personnel policy, employee handbook, the job descriptions and evaluations. So that's all been cleaned up. Uh, and I give you all a copy of that to look at. The evaluations now are set up narrowly employed and salary employed. And, uh, it's, uh, I think she did a real good job of cleaning up the job descriptions. Updated the personnel manual, so we're within legal ramifications for that and, uh, employee handbook. So, uh, I think we're moving forward on that. Talk about public records. The, uh, council member Shirley and I met with Mark Larson, that's the owner and the city attorney. He gave us a price of between forty and eighty K for that process. I will tell you that I've also talked to Chris Rowe, who did our Bellview Estates Island underwriting. And, uh, he will give us a proposal also, so we can kind of compare. Mark was very informative, uh, and council member Shirley kind of heard thoughts on it also. But, uh, it was very educational and I want to thank the city attorney for putting that together. It was supposed to be an hour and I think it was two and a half, something like that. It, it, it was a while. So, uh, we learned a lot of things about that. At previous council meetings, the council was talking about getting the work session scheduled back on. And typically it's the third Monday. It has been. So you see on here, it's set up for the third Monday. I've had one, one discussion about talking about the strategic plan. So if there's anything else you want to put on there, uh, if that's data is fine with everyone.
No, I was going to address that after you finish.
Okay.
For not, I mean, it may not be for me. It doesn't mean you can't have the media, but I'd like to be at this one if I could.
Okay. You know, we've just done it on the first and third, council meeting and third, so we had a set schedule. So if we need to adjust it to a different date, you know, I don't have any issue with that. So, uh, that's really up to the council. So, uh, with that, that's, that's everything.
I have a question. Uh, we got an email about a location. Sorry. I'm a resident, I didn't give you the chance. A resident at, uh, Honolulu, about the light pole in the middle of their yard. I looked, it's not, but did we smooth that out or address?
Well, it, it was an act, it, well, no, the light pole was put where it was supposed to be put.
But it's not in the center of the yard.
No, it is not in the center of the yard. It was, uh, what would you say, maybe, it's probably two or three feet in, at the most. And there are others in that same situation. Uh, just to clarify how that worked out, we did photo metrics. In April, we put stakes in everyone's yard. And we even put information out that that's what was happening through city news. We asked for an email. We sent a postcard out to all the residents in that area. If they wanted to keep updated, to send us their email. We got ten emails from that grouping. Unfortunately, the person that we got the email from is not on the constant contact list, nor are they on the, did they sign up for the, the Bellview Estates Island resident list either? So there, there is a, a group that I meet with regularly. That's three residents in that area and they're also supposed to communicate that stuff. So, you know, I don't know, you know, what else we could have done. The stake was there, it was there in April. Uh, that's what was put in. I've got, you know, pictures and everything that it was there. There wasn't damage done to their papers. That's been repaired, uh, and their lawn has been repaired. I think they thought the contractor dug up their yard, but the contractor, the county's the one that dug up their yard because it was a waterway. The contractor caused the waterway and the contractor would be responsible for those repairs. But, uh, at this point, I, I mean, I really think that, you know, we did a lot of due diligence on the location of those and relocating and, and the one area that she asked me to relocate it, I don't think it would suffice for the solar energy. Because there's a big palm tree surrounding it and it's back off the street further with the light, with the, there was no street light there. There is a utility pole there.
I'm kind of chiming in a bit because I spent two and a half hours with these people. They, um, they wanted to meet in there, they wanted to go. And I had to go out and do it. Um, they were not happy with the response that they got from city hall. You know, I know you, um, and I'm not saying you did anything wrong because I wasn't critical of the conversation. Um, but, you know, essentially what was conveyed was, well, that's the right of way. We can put stuff in the right of way. These people didn't accept that. And, you know, I think, as I was thinking about what would be a best practice and, and I didn't know what you had done beforehand. I had only heard their side. But what we do when there's variance, or what you did when you were going to plant the, um, the palm trees and stuff, you had the blueprint and you showed it to everybody. You said, here you go, here's where the stuff's going to go, okay? I would suggest that go one step further, okay? You can tag each person's door. There's no problem with that word political entity. I don't think there's any problem tagging each door in that neighborhood and saying, you know what? It's not a council meeting. This is a meeting with perhaps yourself, Kyle, or Kyle, maybe only the engineer, whoever's responsible. Here's how we came up with this stuff. And when somebody says, you know, why can't you put these, the sign post here or the light post here? You know, there may be a water main, there may be a reason. They don't just throw these things. I know the engineers don't just pick them at random. But we can explain this and hopefully you can come to a resolution. If the people don't come to that meeting, they don't come to anything else, then at that point, I think you have done everything you possibly can. I would just suggest that as a change if it's possible to do. Because at that point, you know, there's nothing like seeing that blueprint and saying, here's your house. Here's where the post is, the sign is going, yeah, light post is going to go. As for the conditions left in, this is not a city project. It was, you know, these other individuals that were doing it, they should have never left it like that. These people have probably a couple of million dollar houses, immaculate inside and out. And they came home to, their neighborhood, their yard was torn up, their father's yard was torn up. And I can understand them being a little hot. Um, and we all saw that, those, those events. Um, these were intelligent people and, uh, and I didn't find them to be unreasonable people though. So I just think that, you know, as a city, maybe we can do it a little bit better. And I mean, not to long, I think another week, a week passed, but we have another complaint about, I mean, like posts being put someplace in a wrong location. I think that's been remedied. Um, but it's, you know, it's a situation that if we can let people know upfront, not just with a statement, because there's all kinds of stakes and marks on everything else in the ground. People don't know what that means, but if they see a blueprint, they know what it means. And then they have the opportunity to speak with you or Kyle, um, and speak with the engineer and what was doing this. And I think if that opportunity is given, would be good. Um, I had a couple of other items. Sure, of course, yes. Yeah, let's take, I'm sorry, let's take a moment.
The petition, one of the, one of the goals of the petition was improved lighting for Bellview State Island. Everybody bought off on that. Those light posts were not putting any half has, I think, well, hey, yep, second place or one, that's good for them. Based on engineering photo metric surveys, we identified black holes and we said this is the best plan to go. Those, those plans were put out on the street. Uh, the situation was a little bit fluid there, it went back and forth and, you know, what was the best idea for this stuff? I touched on it briefly to Jody as a takeaway lesson learned for Harrison. He had bought in and made it clear that when the placement of electrical transformers, uh, light posts and stuff like that, that's, that's the plan. It's there for a reason because it's saving cost, it's most energy efficient. It provides safety for the community and, uh, that's, that's the buying you need to go, want to be moving on. This guy here, he's a tactical guy and obviously if, uh, it's too close, a gas line or something, then he can make those adjustments. But these things shouldn't be moving around in my opinion, just because somebody shouldn't, uh, take, take exception to it. The final last thing is, we circumvented the easement issue with Duke. We dodged that doors. And I think quite quickly, people forgot that, you guys, there's still a utility right way there. If Duke can't come in and put this stuff, you think you would have been out there negotiating with Duke where I want this thing to go? No, you might have been. And we took a lot of that stuff into consideration. Hey, try to get as close as we can to property lines and that sort of thing. So these, these things were half has again. I, I, just be careful because personalities are going to come together in this stuff the last minute.
I, I like to talk on that subject. Where that light fixture is supposed to go, on that block line on their property is a drain. That drain goes across the street and goes out on their property. You could not put a light fixture where it's supposed to go because of the drain light on the ground. Next to that area is a very nice piece of shrubbery. Next to that is a very fancy mailbox. Next to that is another nice shrubbery. So the contractors really looked at all the nice work that was done there. They looked at the street drain, the mailbox, shrubberies and located at work, didn't interfere with anything. Unfortunately, there was a line, underground water line that was not located properly, which is not the contractor's fault, it's the company's fault or the location company's fault. We ran that and they tore up the whole corner of Twenty Second and Louisa. Mayor, I don't know if you saw that, the steep hole in the ground. So unfortunately, the location of some of these utilities was never done properly. But as far as consideration of where anything has been placed, the engineers from Duke, the engineers located all those transformers in areas that were, the power was evenly distributed on transformers. They did a overlay that was double checked by the engineering company, would have had to look at it. I don't know how much more you can do. I think we went then over backwards to do the job in the best possibility. Residents, the community, the people that were involved that went house to house, nothing was left. But there are people that just don't, you know, and that's a problem.
City manager, I had one other item. Um, we, uh, there's a couple of other items that I think we can pick up in unfinished business and I just, just want to get it out there just that, not lose track of them because they've been out there for a while. We'll come up in item thirteen, even though it says not a few. Um, I noticed on the website that we have scheduled, and I don't know how this got scheduled because the council, I don't think approved it, a citywide yard sale, um, in the early part of November. And, um, you know, we spent quite a bit of time listening to residents' concerns about potential parking issues. And I think specifically I, um, I spoke at length about the garage sale and some of the problems that I had encountered trying to go out and visit residents. Parking on both sides of the street doesn't work. Leslie Natero came in and spoke about a study that they did that said fire trucks can't get down. Um, I'm not against a yard sale per se. I, I, you know, we've participated in the past, but I am concerned about, in this case, the parking, if we're not going to do things to police it and everything else. So I, and I don't know how this event got on the board without the council's approval. So I wanted to bring it to your attention and see what you knew about it.
It's, it's handled on the first, it's, it's been done for the first, uh, first Saturday in November for years and years and years.
Twenty first of March of the year.
Yeah, and, um, I can tell you that event has never come to the city council. It's, 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 I'm a staff, I, I mean, people know that, okay, the first Saturday in November each year, the first Saturday in April each year, there's going to be a garage sale and an opportunity to sign up.
I'm not against the event, okay? I do think that the council should approve it. I can give it every event. I don't care if it's been going for a hundred years, it's in the council. Um, but more importantly, I'm very concerned with the parking issue. I don't know that we have the proper, uh, controls in place. I don't know if we're covered by insurance since we're partnering with these people. I don't know if we even have, and for your protection. Um, and you mentioned a statute last time and I read that statute and my legal interpretation, I'm going to defer to council. Um, I don't even know if you have the ability to host this thing under that statute. Um, so we have an unsanctioned event and we have a statute that prohibits it. Um, and if something happens, as we've heard that a fire truck can't get through, I look, I couldn't get my Volvo through and it's a lot smaller than a fire truck. Um, we're parked on both sides of the street. It's bedlam, it's backing up to Gulf Boulevard. This is what I put this firsthand and affects forty streets of the city. Um, where else would I think waiting to happen? So I, I, I really would like to hear from people in council where our liability is with this thing. Because again, I'm not against it and there may be time to fix this, but I think if we're going to have it, there can be only parking on one side of the street. There has to be some regulation here. Um, the same rules that we followed during the, uh, during the, um, city festival would have to be followed in this situation to just make sure that we, we don't have an emergency situation that ultimately if something can go wrong, we go, it will go wrong. And I'm also concerned that if it's a city sale, I'll be in partnership now with the, uh, with the residents because that could need more liability.
I don't think it's a city sale. I think it's just a citywide garage sale in each individual plaza. My, my, you know, if you want to cancel it, that's up to this council. You want to cancel it, well, take it down tomorrow and tell anyone that calls to sign in. It's been canceled because the city council doesn't want to do it. And, you know, it doesn't matter. And, you know, it doesn't matter to me. So the next question is, can no one have a garage sale in this city? That's in the code also, that they can have garage sales. So, you know, it's, it's your pleasure. You know, it's, this is something that's been going on for years and years and years. And they have two, each resident has the opportunity to do two on their own and the two citywide garage sales. So, you know, if the residents decide to just do garage sales on the second Saturday, I, I guess we take their application and go on down the street. But, I mean, that's up to you. If you want to ban garage sales, that's fine too.
Well, I'm not against banning the garage sales, but this comes to me in that phrase, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. Parking was such an issue at the festival that it, it, I'll address it in my city comments or my council comments, but it's just double standard. You know, people made such a fuss about parking for the festival and now garage sales. Like, oh, sure, no problem, park where you want. And I'm just saying, you can't have it both ways. You can't be hot and cold. So I'm not against, I, I'm all for the garage sale, but I'm just saying that you just have to raise that issue that it's just a, it's a double edged sword, you know? You complain about this and all of a sudden the exact same situation's fine. So, and I don't like the, I do not like double standards and that's exactly what this is. And I, like I said, I'll talk more in my comments.
Yeah, a lot of people did complain because they were very concerned. The thing that is though, is still been through. I mean, their concerns were basically told that, you know, we didn't wanna listen to them as the city council. I don't care about garage sales either, I don't do it. But, I mean, are we doing, or is the attempt trying to do exactly what several of the citizens said, or are you trying to threaten them as the city council by saying they can't do this and this and this? Parking on Eighth Street for the festival wasn't two or three hours, as some people said it would possibly be. In front of my neighbor's house, they were there for seven and a half hours. They, or the family that has two little kids. So I'm just saying, I mean, you guys are going after something here that you're just gonna throw the whole community in another or upward. So I'm, I'm just stunned.
Totally stunned.
You're stunned, Councilwoman Swol. Let me quote you. "We have a parking issue on the streets. We don't allow residents to park, but we are opening this up to a citywide event. There's going to be people parking on the streets and that's one of our ordinance as well, as well as the no waiver, that's what you said." I'm glad Patty has the transcript.
Correct.
So, you know, again, it's, it is a double standard. And it's, the problem is, the citywide garage sale, the citywide festival, the city festival, they only parked on one side of the street. And I drove the streets, I bicycled them, and it was Ninth Street that was affected. And you yourself parked in front of your house. And so several of the people complained. So, you didn't come to the festival. So, so much, you know, if we're gonna be concerned about safety, I'm with Robinaki. Let's be concerned about safety. Parking on both sides of the street is dangerous. Parking on one side of the street is not. If you wanna have a citywide garage sale, have it, but you park even on the odd side or the even side, the next year you flip it or next time you flip it. You cannot do it that way. And you need to post signs like the committee had to do for the festival. You need to control this. There were people parking in vacant lots. There were people parking back on Boulevard. There were people parking the wrong way. I know, I went out, I shook people's hands, and there were people parking the wrong way on the streets. And there wasn't extra law enforcement to either, you know, kind of tell them, please park in the right place, or, you know, again, we're not trying to issue tickets. And this does attract, again, we got a lot of complaints over all these outsiders as well. We hosted several of these and guess what? It attracts a lot of outsiders. Most of the people from Beller Beach were not our customers. And we had a fair amount of theft too in the past. So again, I'm not against the sale, I'm against the danger that the sale creates. And I think if we have a plan, it can be pulled off for the first thing. But I wanna see that plan before I sign off on it. And I do wanna hear from legal as about, you know, where we stand with this. So, but we can debate.
I'd like to mention something. Parking on the streets has been an issue every holiday. If anybody has a party, you cannot get a fire truck, emergency vehicle, down that street. And I think eventually we probably should put alternate days parking on the street and then flip flop from year to year, just out of respect for everybody that lives here. I don't think we should go on since it's been such an issue. It's brought up, it's been brought up before, it's nothing new. It's brought up in '04, brought up in '05. Nothing was ever done. Now it's time to address it since we could come to a head and solve it. I think that's, I don't know.
Legal counsel, you wanna weigh in on this? And in terms of, your opinion is a legal opinion, please. What do you like garage sale or not? It's kind of material.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the code provision forty-two dash one oh one and it says that they, houses can have a garage sale after applying for and receiving a city permit. So I would have a question. Is, is first, the citywide thing, is, is that issued? Are there permits issued for that or does everybody just do it?
No, they, they have to sign up and then we put a sign at the end of each street that actually has garage sales. You know, they, they have to sign up. There's a log. I think we've got a couple people signed up so far. But they, so, and the Friday before the garage sale, on Saturday, we put out the signs that say garage sale. It's done the same in Indian Rocks Beach, it's done the same in Beller Bluffs. But this is a citywide sale that's been happening for, well, I've lived here twenty-one years and it's happened. I don't know if there's anyone been here longer than that.
That was the first thing I had a question about because I really simply didn't know. If everybody that's doing it is getting a permit, then you're at least complying with that part of the code. I said, if. The, the other part about the parking is, you know, we, this came up a couple weeks ago, five weeks ago, something like that. I, I had a concern and I actually hate to say stuff like this in public, but I'll say it. And, and I'm completely disregarding the festival we just had. But if you recognize that there's the potential for a problem, you, you really are in a bad position later on if you recognize the potential risk and move on despite it. And in this case, your code says that you can't park on the city streets. And there's a handful of exceptions. I don't see where one of those exceptions fits this event, which is a tradition. So my, my, the best advice I can give you is if you want to have this community tradition ongoing, then you should do something to, do the one thing that I think is within your capability to do, which is park on one side of the street. If you park on both sides, excuse me, both sides of the street and some of these house burns down because the fire truck can't get there, I guarantee you the city will be the dependent wall soon. And that's not a very happy story for me to tell you, but to me, legally, the first thing they're going to point to is you didn't even comply with your own code.
The issue about parking was resolved for the festival. And I thought it was, it was a quick fix. It worked out really well. I went down many of the streets to see how bad it was and there was plenty of really good emergency vehicles. I think when it was raised, it was a legitimate concern, it was addressed and handled well, and I think it worked well. Just spent an hour talking strategic plan with the people who put on that event and jumped over every hurdle that was thrown in front of those guys. And they, they seemed to get it. And here we are managing Botox again, okay? Here we are managing Botox. That's the guy who deals with this thing. He, legitimate issue, parking university vehicles, that was solved. All you gotta do is use that as a cookie cutter.
Yeah, I'm all for that. I mean, we could put on the sign, parking on the, I guess we could add something on when we put the signs up, parking on the right side only or parking on the left side only. You know, if that's your concern. Or we can just do away with garage sales and let the residents have them on their own.
I think making a uniform parking for any event, whether it's a festival, a Trump or Treat Santa, anything that can involve street parking, that there needs to be one side of the street and it can alternate on years, it's right side, even years it's a side, whatever policy everyone would do. And just have a uniform. That way the parking issue comes up and say, well, our policy is this and this is how it is. That way there's no confusion, there's no more, you know, about equals and this and that and the same debate over and over year after year. That way we just put an end to it and it's done.
Yeah, I wondered how you'd do it, but I mean, it's even odd in other house. So it makes sense. I mean, flip a coin. This year it's odd and the next year it's whatever, right?
And I'll add one other objection. I actually, so one side of the street and also looking at the sheriff in the back. I wanna see the sheriff controlling it. Because having signs there that say one side of the street are useless if everybody decides to park on both sides of the street and there's not a patrol. I'm not looking to ticket people. I'm just looking to say that you're on the side, move. Get a ticket if you don't wanna move, but, you know, let's enforce it. Because to councillor's point, if we lock the streets, and particularly with all the comments that came through this council, four or five council meetings, we're gonna get sued. And I don't wanna do a garage sale that badly with the citizens if we're gonna get sued. If we can do this without getting sued, absolutely. I said I wasn't against the garage sale. We participated many times. So if, if that's okay with legal counsel, if that fulfills the legal requirements, we would be parking on one side, there would be proper signs and there has to be proper police patrol. So we'll come to the citizens' comments, let us just get through this part.
Well, I'm saying that's the best you can do based on your code. What you really should do in the future is modify your code so you, you, you have exceptions in there, like the party exception. If somebody's going to have an event, they need to call the city manager and they, or to the combination so that somebody can have. But nothing in your code gives you now.
Correct.
Well, how can you, if, I'm, I'm just gonna give you an example. If you're having a party, how can I say to, to this person across the street who is the vice mayor, we're gonna park in front of your house?
Because next week or next year?
They'll flip flop.
He's gonna have a party and they're parking their bikes.
You'll, you'll?
No, I didn't know.
I have, yeah, done and I'm, I'm saying in the interest of safety, I accept, I accept.
When I have a party, I put limitations or tell the people, park on both sides of the street, on my side. I say park on this side, that's my house.
So you're saying don't rotate it? Just park as an example? If you're ever?
Well, a party, you could say park on one side of the street, but, but I'm saying on the official city event, like a festival or a garage sale, they can all, that way it would be fair if everyone here, they park on my side and on the left side. And like first.
Well, but how can you have inconsistency? I mean, you did it in pass as a, as a courteous, courtesy to the neighbors across the street. But if you do it citywide and you, you put an ordinance together, you're gonna have to flip flop. And that's just what we'll have to deal with.
Official, not your, that's what she wore.
Is it possible that the application for the yard sale include just that, just to notify the person having a yard sale how the parking is supposed to take place? Not that they think, they can't control it or whatever, but at least if someone, because yard sailors are kind of crazy. They just stop in the middle of the road and they see something in that yard, they're leaving a car there and going after it, you know? So at least if you're the person standing in the garage, you'll go, hey, you know, you can't do that, you, you know, you better.
Well, we could, anybody that signs up, since we parked on the hot side at the festival, we'll park on the even side. Is that fair?
Yeah.
Oh, that is reasonable. The outside, because you mix.
But you have like.
Didn't we go to the hot side on Saturday too?
We did not.
Well.
I don't care where you park. I'm kidding you, I really don't care. Put it on whatever side you want, just put it on one side.
But just notifying when they get their permit too, so that that's just another set of eyes maybe trying to.
How much do they have to park on the even adverse side?
Your customers, you know, just remind them to park.
On the even adverse side. Is that fair?
Whatever you decide.
This year, yes. I don't recall them getting permits, so let's make sure they actually get the permits on this thing, okay?
Well, they, they, what they do is they call in, give me their address and name. You don't physically give them a permit.
Pass the permit.
Yeah, that's the one. Yeah, well, that's the only way you can get a street sign if you're having a garage sale. Oh, well, some of your other neighbors signed up.
So we're in agreement then that even this year, next time, next garage sale, it's gonna go the outside, one side of the street only. Make sure there's police out there. The air's gonna be traveling again, shaking hands, so let's make sure that, I wanna see police out there, okay? Thank you. All right, that's done. Is there any other comments for the city clerk? City clerk, I'm sorry, for the city manager. We're gonna, we're gonna go to the city clerk. I made it out. Good. June? Please keep it working. The job has to kill me.
Right, but you think it's by a partner or? Okay, so I'm, I'm asking that the council reconsider that for the simple fact is I don't think the events should be caught up in this because if they have a bad experience with the garage sale, we all know it's total chaos. I think it's gonna interfere with our events in the city. So I think the rotation should be for the garage sale only. The rotation should be separate for the park and rent sport. Now, we've already addressed this a long time ago, that we would be rotating our events. So if you parked on the left this time, next time we'll be parking on the right. So I don't think that the, the event should be caught up in this because I think it's gonna be here and we're gonna have more drama over this whole thing. I think they should be separated.
That makes, that makes sense because like the festival, the Trump or Treat, Santa, if you all do even side, that's three events within a couple months on one person's side of the street. Correct. Well, I know, but I'm just saying that if you had more events, then it would be not fair to, to events.
And, and we are required to, to keep records and they're on, the city records on which side the parking is permitted for our event. So there's no reason we can't go back and review and say, hey, you know, the park did, parked department, parked there, but on the left last side, unless you have to hit the right this time. So there is public records for that. So I, I ask that you keep that separate. The other thing too is when we're promoting the garage sale, how are we promoting? What verbiage is being said? It, you know, when we're promoting, I'd like to know what verbiage was said, what went out there? So we're not opening ourselves up for liability. And then the other thing is, have review you the city's insurance policy. During our event, every vendor, you know, that, that came in, okay? And like the tent, I had to have a million dollar coverage policy from, from them insuring the city. I had them have a million dollar policy from the bounce house people. Again, Mr. Bills gave us an insurance policy. You see, they insured the city, okay? So my question to you is, what does our policy say to protect us in relation to how we're promoting this event? Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, you want to address that concern, that last concern?
I think our, I think our liability insurance would, would cover this event. You know, if you want me to call the biggest cities and ask them about garage sales, but, you know, I think, actually probably Beller Bluffs is doing theirs the same weekend and Indian Rocks is doing theirs the same weekend as us. Typically they do.
I think you have to call them. I wanna know if we're covered by insurance. I mean, yeah.
Is it?
Okay. I, I think we need to.
So, Len, can I ask you just a quick question? And I just want this, you know, I don't mean to drag this conversation on, but the, the yard sale is not really supported by the city. We're just providing signs for anybody to call. We're keeping a roster of those who call in and say that they are participating in the yard sale on November third or whatever the date is.
Yeah.
And the city's not promoting, we're not advertising.
Well, we do, we do put an advertisement in the newspaper. We have that in the, in the Beller Beach.
We'll also put it on your board. You'll also have, you'll also have cards on Boulevard.
Well, we have the, the poster that says garage sale.
I think that's advertising. I think that's advertising. I'd like, I'd like, I just wanna confirm, I mean, if obviously if it's insured, send us as council just to note that it's insured. If it's not insured, tell us that and then. If it's not insured, tell us that and then we might have a problem with the event. But right now, it's insured.
I really don't think, I guess I'm kind of confused and maybe the city attorney can tell me. What liability would, we'd have the same liability if Johnny drove down the street or I rode my bicycle. The, if there's any liability, it would be on the property owner, I guess.
I'll give you your example, what we just talked about. Park on one side of the street, we don't have sufficient police patrol. Somebody parks on the other side, somebody suffers a heart attack, truck can't get through, they die, they sue us. There's your lawsuit. You can defend it, you might win, it might spend a hundred thousand defending it. That's my concern, and I want to know that our insurance...
Well, as long as we're parking on one side of the street though, is what I'm saying.
Well, we have also have some enforcement mechanisms, am I correct? And this is not a knock on the sheriff, I never saw one on the last garage sale. And I traveled all four districts, so wherever they, I don't know. Maybe it was break time, maybe it was changing the shifts, I don't know. But I want to make sure around them.
They're, they're, they would be the same shift, I can tell you that.
I see.
Okay.
Well, I'll answer the question, the problem is, you're not enforcing your own code. And that, that's the first thing they will point to. So the best you can do is somehow put in something that's a measure to try and minimize the potential for there to be a problem. The problem, there's another problem with this, and I'm segregating out the festival we just had, is unfortunately, I didn't even know you had yard sales until about a week ago. And, you know, in an ideal world, you'd modify the code in advance to provide for something so that at least you could offer a solution that's consistent with the code. So going forward, that's really what you should do in the near term, is modifying your code. For purposes of an event that's basically a month away, when you're not going to have two meetings to pass a change with a code, then I think the best you can do is, is try and put in a sensible safety mechanism, which you can park on one side and one...
When is the festival, November 2nd? Fourth?
Somewhere there.
2nd, November 2nd.
I think it's, yeah, the 2nd.
Fred, I'm hearing, you know, it's the best you can do. Listen, this is not the world's greatest tradition, that's went on for six centuries and, you know, this is what our cities are built around. If this has to be deferred because it's going to potentially create a legal liability, then we'll, I'll put this to a vote on this council. And we can decide as a council if we want to defer it or go forward with it. But we're going to live and die by that. And if something does happen against legal counsel or against, you know, I don't want to have the best solution, I want to have the right solution. This is not some tradition that has to happen. You don't have a hundred thousand people flying in for this. This is a garage sale, you know, but, but it's also a potential liability.
I mean, it's up to the council. I mean, I don't have any, you know, concern whether we have or don't have. That's, that's really up to the council. Because any resident can come in and get a permit for a garage sale.
I suspect that the reason why the garage sale day came about was prevent our city from going on a jump up where they were running yard sales going on all the time. And this way, jumped up for one day, there's cars going out, cluttering the streets and then everyone's gone. I rarely see a standalone garage sale, yard sale, whatever you like to call it. But I think because our charter does allow for individuals to have yard sales, I think that there's going to be blowback from destroying it or offering it in such a way to where maybe, you know, definitely we need to cover our career ends legally. But at the same time, I think that there's a need for a yard sale.
Why don't we go ahead and just put the necessary signage on the streets along with the yard sale sign, park it only on one side. And then go ahead, I'll make a motion that we change our ordinance to some type of flip-flop, week to week, month to month, day to day, whatever it takes. And only park on one side of the street.
I'll just separate out that motion. We can't do that motion at this point. I think this is just construction to the city manager, it's like, we're going to go ahead. And I, again, I cited council member Gaddis and everyone's, again, I had nothing against the sale. We participated many times, had a lot of fun. So I want to do it, I just want to do it safely. So I think what I'm hearing, and that being, it's not, this is just a consensus of our council here. We're going to authorize the city manager to go through with the yard sale as advertised for November 2nd. That's point number one. Point number two, he is to park on one side of the street. He is to direct everyone and put up adequate signage throughout the city. Parking on one side only. And this year, it's going to be the even side, direct, okay? Even side of the street only, for this sale, next time we will be odd. Three, he will...
Except on Seventh Street.
Except on Seventh Street. Right, it's an exception, because you're, I don't care, I don't care. Nobody parked on our street, I don't care. But you can park, you can do it. So we just keep it simple, even side, okay? And he will also direct the sheriff to patrol and handle incidences according to their protocol of when people parking on the wrong side so as to ensure that we don't have an emergency situation developed. That's what we're voting on. I have this clear, it's not a motion, this is a consensus. That encompasses our discussion. I'm going to do it, just, all in favor, or...
Change the ordinance.
Well, we have to change the ordinance at a later date. I think the whole parking ordinance needs to be changed at a later date. There's many issues with the parking ordinance. An example, let's say you have a party for a hundred people at your house, okay? We have the same situation. We need to come up with some sensible regulations and rules that actually make this thing workable. There was issues I brought up in the past about campaigning, about individuals with religious things. We've just got to fix that ordinance. So we're not fixing that tonight. This is to get this thing going and keep this great tradition in our city. So Patty, do we have to do this by person or can we just do a show of hands here?
Just consensus.
Consent, so all in favor of the way I just said it? Aye? Do you have anyone opposed? No. Back to your direction, city manager. Thank you. I have no more questions for the city manager, is anyone else? Okay, we now move to the city clerk. Nothing? I have only one for the city clerk, we just, we have to pick this day. A point I had asked Patty today, because I was a little shocked, I said, "Well, who called this meeting for the 21st?" Again, sticking to our rules, okay, and we do have rules. And I, again, I don't, there was nothing nefarious about this. If we're going to call these, then either the mayor or three council people have to call a meeting. And then we advertise it. What we've done here is advertise it, and then we're going to have people to call it. And that's a little backwards. So the problem that comes in is that 21st wouldn't have been my first choice. And I think this is an important meeting, because I think I'd like to try and reestablish our priorities as a council to what we think is important. So I don't know what days work for everybody. In the future though, if we pick a day, either city manager or city clerk, all you need to do is just bounce me an email and I'll just say, "Yes, and now it's an official meeting and we've complied with our charter and our ordinances." And, or you have to get three council members and take the path of least resistance. I'm never going to turn one down. If this date isn't, if the 21st is good for everyone else and not me, it's a possible day where I'm not going to be here.
I won't be here.
Okay, you're not here, so we have, so that's three. So the 21st, this is why we want to try and get some consensus. And, you know, it's not a sunshine violation to bounce out to everyone what day is good for a meeting. Why don't we just do it here at the meetings to try and come up with a day?
I also think that, not this month obviously, but that we need to go back to a set, you know, the first Monday is the council meeting, the third Monday is the work session. And just keep it, that way we can make plans accordingly and we know. Because I had no idea about this one, that's why I made plans, because we haven't had one.
I think that's how the 21st came about.
Right, but I don't...
Trying to get back to the original...
But we haven't had one in the last four months, so I forced them up that I decided to do it on the third Monday. It's my luck.
And I'm not going to say why, because it's on camera, but I may not be here that day. And I have something to, I may be here, I may not be here, so I don't know. The week of the 14th through 18th work for anybody? Our, our, works. Would the 14th be good? As a Monday, or it doesn't have to be a Monday, it could be a Tuesday, it could be a Wednesday.
It doesn't work for me.
Doesn't work for you?
No, it doesn't work for me.
Monday works, the 14th? That's Columbus Day?
Yeah, it's one...
It's a holiday. It's what's not a holiday for us, but it's...
It's forbidden.
Yeah, I don't know if I can make it that day, but...
Is the 15th good? Good?
Yeah.
Good, we have consensus, 15th.
I'm like, to you, I planned on it, the 21st, for the thing that came out. That is the only thing I have available for it, so...
I may not have everybody. What, it doesn't matter.
The week of the 21st, is there any other days?
Yeah. Um, I'm, 24th or 25th, we may be fine. It's a Friday. 22nd is not going to be good. Definitely not. My birthday, I'm not coming here on that day. 24th or 25th, or we, you know, we go, 20, 21, 22. Or the 14th, 15th, 16th, I mean, it seems like we have a lot of good stuff on the 15th.
How about the following Monday, the 28th?
Nope.
No?
Not for me. I would be on the radio, this would be there.
28th or 29th?
Yeah, okay, it's fine, it's okay with me, that's fine.
We have a form for the 28th?
28th or 29th?
Uh, yep, I'm good. Okay, good.
Three to seven.
You, yeah. You have a form?
If you want to set the priorities before people, that's fine, but I'd like to try and get everyone together if we could. This is an important work session, so you need to set where we go, I think, for future work sessions. If we do it, what I'm suggesting, of course, we can put anything we want, but I don't know what's important anymore. We have, I have 10 items, so that's me. And everybody else probably has 10 each, so we can't do 70 items in one night.
What? I'm hearing a lot of conversation out there, because there are times I say that I'm busy. I have a personal fally wedding going on in this month that I thought I'd go to Houston, just in case everybody would like to know, I'm not just sitting up here saying I can't make it, no reason.
Go back to the 14th, 15th, it seems like we have a lot of people available from 14th to 15th. How many are available? I don't care about Columbus Day, 14th, 15th is... 14?
14.
14, 14 or 15, so. Councilwoman Swob, you're allowed to participate. We had this happen last time, Barb was on the telephone line. So if that works for you, I know the attorney general doesn't like it for regular meetings, but this isn't a regular meeting, it's a work session. And you're certainly able to participate that way. So we can make any accommodations, you know, if we can. 14th, 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM?
And just know I may or may not, so...
Okay, that's fine. For that session, my suggestion, and again, this is just a suggestion, I don't know where we're going priority wise. And I think, what I'm kind of thinking is like, maybe we can just get everyone's priorities to themselves. For example, you know, strategic plan and, you know, this, this code, not code, the charter review committee, things like this. And we have to kind of triage this stuff and say, what are we going to work on? Because we can't work on 60 different things, we have to work on a couple. So maybe we throw it out, and what I kind of have in mind, we just did this at EMO, it's almost like a speed dating kind of thing. You get like five minutes and we go through these things and we say what are important and we start to prioritize. And we're not going to solve anything that night, we're not supposed to solve it, it's a work session. But at least, yeah, where we're going with this stuff and what's priorities to this council. And then on our next work session, we start attacking these things like we were doing. But I think we as a council kind of have to agree where we're going, and that's why I think this is important.
Mayor, going forward though, can, can we get a consensus so everyone knows for when the work session is each month going forward?
Third Monday?
Is that fair?
It's fair.
That's what we were working on, the third Monday. But let's make it official, write me, write me an email, I'll bring it, I don't care when you write it to me for November, but I will say, "Yes, and you have that in your record, you called a legal meeting."
Just make the standing like every, um...
Third Monday?
Especially just like every first Monday is a, and that way...
Every third Monday.
Yeah, we can, yeah, you can make it by consensus.
About waiting for an email to confirm it, then...
No, 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 the emails to me, just, so he has a legal meeting. This way, he has something in his file, if anybody says, "Hey, you guys called an illegal meeting." No, we didn't.
I thought you meant I had a...
No, 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 no.
Whenever I showed up for one, nobody was there.
Third Monday, right, we're good with that? For tradition?
Yeah, but are we, we're going to have an agenda though on this upcoming. We're not going to have like 30 topics that we're going to try to fit into one meeting. We're going to have an agenda. I mean, I think clearly we, strategic planning was what we talked about the last meeting. We talked about having a work session and discussing strategic planning. I don't, I think we need to be clear what we're meeting about and have an agenda and not have 30 items.
I thought the point this one was to figure out what's going to be our priorities, because as important as strategic plan is, and I don't minimize it, if we don't get started on this charter review, we are going to miss our elections.
Okay, so we can talk about strategic plan and charter review, but I don't think we need like 10 other topics. I think we need to be very, yeah, very concise about what we're meeting on.
And I would also say, let's set limits on this. We can talk for half an hour or 45 minutes, we do not have, we're not going to solve the strategic plan in one night. But if this is to get us going and figure, these are the two most important things. And if anybody else has anything else on most important, throw it in, let's get it out there. I mean, we could always choose not to do it that night, but, but I think we do have to start thinking about what our priorities are going forward as a council.
Somebody's got any ideas for a list, right? And just, we can take five minutes and prioritize those, throw them out. Not discuss them, but just, yeah, for a session.
Okay, fair enough. That's it, no other questions for city clerk? Finished, unfinished business. Any, it says none, but I think there were a couple of items, I'm just going to throw them out. And I don't want an answer on this, because we're being recorded, okay? I just want to get out. We talked about the closed captioning, we talked about our city website being ADA compliant. But I would like to have you assured, I know this, Glenn had asked this a couple of months ago, I've had it on my open items list, to make sure that they are both in. Glenn asked about the closed captioning, I'm adding the city site, make sure of it, okay? Let's get a letter from whomever is the person who's reviewing this. Because I know Victor told us that it's closed captioned, but we haven't verified that. And I'm sure Victor's honest, because the day is long, but we need to make sure. Because if something comes up here, we're going to be the ones that are going to be responsible, not Victor. So don't answer the question, we just want to get it on the menu.
No, no.
You got it, okay, perfect. The accounting, we had talked about, you know, we have this temporary accounting setup. I remember the words of Jody Shirley directly, "I don't want to have this go on forever." We're getting into the forever, we're in October already, and at least we start getting to the end of the year. So I just want to bring up that, that is a charter position, we need to address that somehow, this accounting hire. So just, if, again, we don't have to have an answer tonight on this, but I think we need to have an answer maybe for that work session as to where we stand on both of these items. Or, you know, these items that I just raised. That was all I had for unfinished business. Anybody else have anything?
There's only one thing, I sent city manager some information on seawalls and codes pertaining to seawalls, but we haven't had the time to discuss it because we haven't had a work session. I wonder if we could talk about that someday.
Sure, I mean, we can talk about a work session, it's not unfinished, we never raised it.
It has to do with code enforcement and, you know, viewing the water side of the properties and making sure the seawalls are in good condition.
Actually, that is, we've talked about that, and yes, we could have that to embrace.
He's got the information, I pulled it up and so...
Well, we also have to throw the speeding thing, because we never resolved that either. And I know we're going to look into that. So again, maybe this is quick topics for the next work session, but the main event, I think I agree with. If we're all in agreement, we'll focus on strategic plan and this charter review committee. We'll be good with that as a council? That's the main event, and we'll handle these other stuff on the items. Okay, we're finally at city council comments. I don't know, we don't know what month it is anymore, whether it's odd or even, let's just start at this side. Then I have to go to the other side?
No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I can do it. Kind of, I just want to address some comments I saw on Nextdoor. I'm a little confused about a few things, because, you know, before the festival, people were saying they didn't want too many people, you know, that weren't Beller Beach. And then that they don't advertise, because we don't want others to come and it costs too much traffic and it's going to be crazy and parking's going to be off-road.
it's gonna be crazy, and parking's gonna be off-road, and, and after the event, there was complaints because they said only fifty people showed, and that where was the advertisement? Nobody advertised, where was the advertisement? And, um, this event is not successful, because barely anybody showed, and vendors were so disappointed, they weren't, we know that, um, so, I guess, I guess I just want to address just negativity in general, I already talked about double standards, and I don't know why the city is doing this, I don't know what it is, but I'm even looking at this records request, and there's one for Shirley's emails, one for Mr. Mayor, Manzo's emails, one for Swob's rental agreements, something, oh, a survey for the constant contacts, somebody wanted a copy of that, someone wants Ms. Manscoys' emails, and I mean, it almost seems like there's personal vendetta against people in this, and I just don't get it, I mean, none of this is directed at me, I'm the outsider in this, looking, I guess, from the inside view, um, no one's doing this against me, but I, I just don't get it, I don't understand why we came to this point, and I'm not looking for answers, I'm just venting on the behalf of people, but I don't know why we're looking into anybody's private emails, I don't, I mean, are we thinking about collusion? I mean, this is just sounds like the federal government all of a sudden, um, and I just don't like the bad attitudes in the city, whether, you know, for, I'm just gonna use, you know, I, I'm not a member of the garden club, I don't plan to be a member of the garden club, but I fully support them meeting and doing all their events, and they'll get my full support, and I'll help promote it to whatever, even though I won't agree with it, I'm not gonna go to it, doesn't mean I'm not gonna support them, because they're my neighbors, and it's important to them, so my whole point is, you know, people that were against this festival that didn't want to go, well then, fine, I'll go, but don't be negative for the people that do. And so, again, I thought it was a great event, and I know that people on the Parks and Rec Board were personally attacked, personally, not about their position on Park and Rec, about who they are, who they're dating, who they, how, how good their minutes were, how, you know, whether it should be a transcript or not, and all of this stuff, there's a lot of people, so many sides attacking the Park and Rec, and nobody attacked me, but I'm speaking out for those people who were attacked, and I just don't ever want to be attacked, and I don't, I don't want to see anybody else attacked, so I don't know if we need to talk to friends of friends of friends, and just tell people on Nextdoor to just cool it, and like I said before, can't we all just be alone? Just, and so, I don't know, I'm just venting for the behalf of people that were attacked, one of them was my Nextdoor neighbor, well, two over, um, and I didn't appreciate her being attacked, and just, yeah, so I, I hope this stops, I hope these, no one's here, I'm venting cheap, I mean, you're always here, I hope this stops, and that people stop trying to go after and look for, oh, someone said this one little word wrong, and so let's attack them, let's look into their personal emails, let's look in their personal business, I, I mean, we all volunteered to be up here, nobody is up here for the wrong reasons, nobody's out to attack citizens, no one's trying to get back at anybody because of whatever beef in the past, so, nobody from the public, or the residents aren't here, so maybe they'll watch from video, but I really hope that people realize that we have our best intentions for the city, otherwise, trust me, I would be home with my, with my kids right now, I would not be up here if it wasn't because I had my heart in the right place when it came to the city, so please, if you know of anybody who's starting anything on Nextdoor or reacting to anything on Nextdoor, just, please tell them just to, how would they feel if the reverse was happening to them? Same thing I tell my kids, you know, treat others like you want to be treated, so I feel like I'm talking to my kids, so, sorry, that's, that's it. That's all.
Thank you, Robert.
You're welcome.
And by the way, I did do it right, it's an even month, and I started this, uh, even month, so. Go ahead, Councilmember Bean.
Uh, it's, you know, the Festival Street had a lot of fun, three people got dumped, so again, I got splashed a couple times, um...
Diserved.
I know I did, I did. But as far as the comments, it's ridiculous, I don't know if we could do anything with the ethics, but, or post a, something, but some decent, just be decent one, it doesn't make any sense. It's, it's, it's gotten out of control, it's, it's been out of control, you know, six, oh seven, but this is over the top, there's just no reason for it. I hold a stanchion, that's it.
Thank you. Davey?
First, I'd like to say that, uh, I'm proud of the city for us surviving the festival, and, and I, I'm very sincere whenever I say that, um, we could have allowed this to destroy the city, just because, uh, there were two very different sides of the fence, and, uh, I, I totally understand both sides, uh, I don't understand why some people were being overly vocal, to the point of just absolutely insanity, but, uh, that being said, um, we survived it, uh, as a council, I'm very proud of, uh, all of us, uh, for getting through this and not allowing it to destroy us, um, in the long, uh, the long term of it all, I believe that we are now stronger because of that, and, uh, I would like to thank, uh, June, uh, for, uh, staying strong and staying on course, uh, with her plan. That being said, it's time to move on, I, I really don't think it's, uh, beneficial to keep harping on the city about what, you know, how, how bad they were, or what mistakes they made, where all the, and that, and it's just time to move on, again, I'm very proud of what we've accomplished, I look forward to the next years of them, and, uh, I think it's, uh, just like our cell date, we've got a new tradition, so, uh, uh, also, uh, on a different topic, undergrounding, uh, yep, I understand that mistakes have been made, none, which I believe were, uh, the same, nor do I think that they, uh, could have been prevented, uh, with the exception of just not doing the project. Whenever I spoke with, um, various companies involved about drilling, uh, just because something shows up on the media that says there's a pipe or a wire below you, uh, which you don't realize is they're talking about five feet in any direction, uh, so, is, is it perfect? Absolutely not, but I'm very proud of what has been accomplished, and I'm so looking forward to this, uh, project, uh, being finished, uh, and, uh, serving as an example of what, uh, what can be done whenever the citizens pull together, and, uh, and, uh, decide that they won't have changed for their, their neighborhood and their city, uh, so, I'd like to wish Shirley, uh, good luck, with her neighborhood.
God bless you.
But it's a much smaller project than what's, uh, what's happened, uh, in our neighborhood, and, uh, I, I think, and, and, at the end of the day, as more of these, I've said it all along, as more neighborhoods elect to do this, I believe others are gonna want the same thing, eventually, one day, uh, that people will be like us, so, it's very cool. Um, that's really all I've got for now, thanks, everyone forgot.
Thank you, Dave. Jerry?
Just a quick, uh, I guess, maybe this is directed to Glenn, the parking sticker resolution, have we, that hasn't been before yet, and I know we all kind of got it sent to us, and we could see that soon?
We, we need to have some discussion on that in total, because I only got really one comment, no one else, everyone else was happy with it, so we need to add that discussion maybe a few minutes at the work session.
Okay, that was my comment, you got it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. My concern, just in a nutshell, was some more procedure, these things now have monetary value, my concern is how we're gonna account for them, and who receives it, um, because last time, we, you know, we denied them to some, again, consistency, like Brother Naki was saying, um, you know, I had nothing against the idea that the city attorney should get a sticker, does work here, should get one, but we have to find who gets one, okay, because our rule say, we have to be resident, and get it into non-residents, not just willy-nilly, but we just should specify, there's not a lot of people, we need to have them, so that was, it just, my things, I think we can take care of this, and, you know, if it takes fifteen minutes, let's say it takes a half an hour, we fix it up, we can go forward.
Can I add something to that? Can we have brown stickers next year?
No, it's a tradition, that we have square ones.
Well, you can't this year, because I would have. I already got numbers on them.
I want to hear the number.
Dave, we have a tradition that they're square with a seashell in the middle, so...
I'd like to make a comment, too, there are people that actually live here that, um, have vehicles that they cannot get a sticker for, because they don't have their registration, because it's like a company vehicle, so is there something that would be put in place to help assist those people, they live here, they pay taxes, they're here every day, yet they can't get a beach sticker?
Well, we'd have to change that in the ordinance, just so, the way the ordinance is written now, you gotta have a driver's license with your street address, and the registration has to match, and if you're a renter, you have to have a lease that matches that address also.
Again, coming from twenty-four hours of indoctrination from EMO, um, the cities that get sued, and the cities that vary from their policies, so if we say you have to have a registration, you have to have a registration, if we say you have to live here, you have to live here, you know, Glenn and I, in the beginning, had a very, um, you know, emotional situation, a person was dying of cancer, and said, we really want to walk their beaches, they were not going here, they're going to be a box, and we said, we're sorry, we can't do it, but you know, and again, I'm not picking on this, but then we're giving a sticker to our former town attorney, which I believe he deserved one, okay, he does work here, he should park in our lot, but we need to be consistent, he didn't live in the city, and I think Fred should have a sticker, I think everybody, you know, who does work in the city, you know, your, your employees, are they supposed to pay? No, I don't think that's the case, so, but we just, we gotta specify this, because, you know, the person is gonna say, well, you gave it to that person and not to this person, so that's what the purpose of the comments for when you make these resolutions, and then we'll talk about it, and we'll doctor the thing up, and give you something that you can work with. Let me see what other cities do. Anyway, I think Jody Shirley brought you in, and then...
Yeah, I was just going to kind of, and Glenn touched on this a bit, that we met with Mark Lawson about the, um, stormwater assessment fee, and he tried to guide us through this, and, um, it went gray for a while, and we finally got it back on track, and, um, he, he was kind of a loose estimate of what he thought his fees would be, I think he was supposed to maybe think through that a little bit and tell us, but we haven't heard back from him, but Glenn and I have also, you know, contacted, uh, Chris Crowe, talking to some, um, uh, engineering firms to help us with the methodology for the cost, so we can, it's going to be the same process nearly that you guys went through with the undergrounding, so, we, you know, we need to, uh, go through that methodology process, get those costs certified, go through the whole, the same process we did, where there was a county hearing, then, then, then we can use the, um, utility to collect once we decide that number, what that number should look like, um, you know, it's clear we won't be able to collect nearly what we're spending, but at least we can offset some of the costs, so that would be kind of the thought process, so we'll, we'll continue, I guess, Glenn and I will work on that, now, Glenn, one of the things I saw, I remembered in my notes, was the recommendation to talk to Ken Small, who is a teacher at the, um, League of Cities, that he might be a good person for us to maybe invite to be part of our finance committee, because he's got such a strong background in municipal finance, and he is, um, I guess, really open to sharing his knowledge, so he might be a good person for us to contact, and I'm not sure, Glenn, do you have his number, do you want to contact to him?
Yeah, I can get that, that's, because he's, he's retired, put on...
Yeah, so that was something really interesting, so, we haven't really made any headway, but we do kind of know what we need to do, so, that's where we're at.
I, I just saw some article in ICMA where something is found, they found a construct, an innovative way to even do new construction for stormwater and still get in under the guideline, or, I'll see if I can find it, it's kind of interesting, not just, you know, recurring fees, but...
Is it in the magazine?
No, I think it was, I'm on some hit list out there, it was serious.
That's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Swob?
Um, also, I looked at this list as well, Councilmember Dr. Naki, and yes, last year, twenty eighteen, my rental agreement was asked for by a city council member, apparently it's been asked for again, just so everybody knows it, I'm pretty sure the city clerk has that to pass out, um, but what I would like to do is also make sure that my, um, financial information, on how I paid my credit card, that kind of information is not being passed out to this person that's asking for it, because, um, that is not public knowledge, but if anybody else would like to have a copy of it, because my husband and I have signed an agreement, we pay the insurance, we clean this place when we leave, so everything's done up and up, so, feel free to ask Patty, or, you can call, um, well, you guys can call me, but any member out here can call me, and I'll be happy to email you a copy of it as well, so, except for the financial part of it. So do I have reinsurance, if that is not on there?
I don't believe it is, but let me double check, I don't think it is.
Please do.
That's it? Yes, Mayor?
One afternoon I brought back from the, uh, I EMO in the Florida League of Cities was C A B E.
I know what you're talking about.
C A B E, Citizens Against Versusly Everything, they're out there, there's nothing we can do about it, we, you're not gonna change your opinion, no matter how logical it is or whatever, so we just take it on the chin and take the higher road on some of this stuff. Now, I have a dream, we take the higher road, we air our differences inside this chamber, and, but when we take a vote, and it's, it's a legitimate vote, when we walk out here, we support the decision of this council, right? I mean, that's, that's what it's about, leadership is all about, okay, so, we have our discussions, we have our debates here, when we have a vote and we decide on something, I, I'm not saying you have to go out there and hold rallies, but I'm just saying, it kind of bites your lip if, uh, the topic comes up on social media or something like that. The Mayberry Beach Festival, I'll pile up the honorable sayings here, staying the course, in, uh, the highest accolade of naval services is BZ or Bravo Zoo, you did a great job, Bravo Zoo with the festival, uh, besides just all the warm, fuzzy stuff, hey, it was a right-size event, we seemed to have dodged all the bullies, and everybody walked away pretty happy, but I'll tell you from a higher view on this thing, from the business sense of it, I've looked at some of the numbers, and what I see is, when I take into consider, we, we know that there was some impact on our city staff, okay, I mean, we knew that at the outset, and it was a concerning weight heavily on us, and we took that into account, but when I, I, I look at the impact on our city staff, and I make some assumptions of the manpower invested in the pre-administrative stuff, I look at the meetings, attending meetings, I look at the setup, the event itself, cleanup, I look at the closeout administrative stuff, and when I compare it to the, the revenues that we take in, just the raw budgeted revenues for rental of this place, and you compare to the time span, of, hey, we had a one-day festival, we took in this amount, and we spent this much manpower on it, and wait, it's just the gross revenues for renting out this place, guess what? The dollar return on investment per hour invested in that festival is on par, if not better, than some of the other revenues we're taking in here, and we need to sit back and kind of look at some of this now, because we were just talking about the strategic plan today, maybe this is the kind of event that's scalable, maybe we don't want to be real big, but maybe if there's a way to scale it a little bit bigger and bring in some money, and funnel those monies to support specific things, just like assessments, hey, we use our part, guess where that money should go? It should be just like a user's fee or whatever, that kind of stuff goes into supporting and improving parks and recreation or whatever, so I'll just, I'll just throw that out there, but a great job. That's all I got.
Excellent, thank you. Um, all right, first of housekeeping, I was sent three letters, I'm not gonna read these, it's late, um, the Pinellas Public Library Cooperative asked us if we wished to join, we have fifty, uh, one thousand five hundred eighty-eight people at thirty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents a pop, it costs us fifty-five, uh, fifty-four thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars to join the library, um, I'm going to send, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna scan these in, I don't know if I'm gonna do it tomorrow, the next day or whatever, I'm gonna send them to Patty, and I'll send a copy to Glenn, they'll send them to you, if you want this, just make a motion, tell me where we're gonna get the fifty-five thousand from. Next, Sheriff Goldiary sent me a letter, and says that the, uh, Commission on Accreditation, which credits his sheriff's department, is meeting November fourth through seventh, and basically, uh, there's going to be a meeting on Wednesday, November sixth, at five P M., that's open for everyone, you can make your comments, there's other provisions for how you can make it if you can't be there, I'm gonna send this to you, um, I think this goes for everyone in our city. And last, something I'm gonna touch about, is former Pinellas, um, Mayor Kennedy of Indian Rocks, and the, um, the commission, the, uh, Board of County Commissioners has approved some mileage rates that affect us, um, affects our county tax, not our personal taxes, and with that, it'll segue into the county transportation tax, um, just had a mayor's council meeting, and, uh, what they're doing is, they're putting the emphasis on public transportation, the problem is, Gulf Boulevard isn't considered really a priority area, okay, so we're gonna pay for it, um, but it's not gonna really directly benefit us, it'll benefit the rest of the county, but if... but it benefits stuff that's more inland. That county commission meeting is October seventeenth, if anyone cares to go. I don't have the time, but I'm sure it's on their website. If you wish to go and say your piece, I think they give you three minutes also. But, um, it's, you know, this is money being paid that isn't going to directly benefit us. That would benefit you if you're driving to Tampa, but it's not gonna benefit our Gulf Boulevard. So all the traffic issues and stuff we have, that's not being addressed by this. Um, secondly, you may have, I'm turning into quite the media person. You might have seen me on TV. Um, we had a meeting with Big C, and, uh, the, um, we organized something. Mark, I know, was there, uh, to deal with the issue of home rule. You know, I'm all for, you know, paying attention to all the, the stuff that we've talked about. We spend a lot of time, and I said it the other week, it's only so much time in my schedule. I'm your best advocate for this stuff. And, um, we have, just so everyone knows, I'll keep it brief, um, a direct threat to our home rule. Home rule is where we get to make the decisions up here for what's the city should be doing, and we're the best people to make that decision. That's not what the legislators think, and it is not what our legislator thinks. Um, Nick DeSigley is our representative, and the Florida League of Cities puts out the voting record. And he voted for everything that they basically don't support, and they support maintaining home rule. What did he vote for? And it didn't pass yet, okay? But it's coming back again. He voted to basically take away our home rule and ability to govern ourselves for our rental ordinance. If this thing passes, and it is coming back, and that's why we had the meeting, it was a subtle word to the legislators that we're watching, and I'm going to watch, and I'm going to let everybody here know. Um, I'm gonna try to be as active as I can on this, but I need your help. I don't have to do this alone. They want to take this away from us. You want to know how bad it is? I talked with Mayor Kennedy. They, Indian Rocks lost theirs. I don't know how they lost it, but they lost their thing with that government short-term rentals. Real estate values are down. Yeah, you can't ever change that ordinance, and I think they changed it. So Glenn Dunn just said, "Well, that's a mistake, and you can't make that mistake." We won't make that mistake here. They did. Well, people are moving out of the city, and real estate values are plummeting because they cannot control the short-term rentals. But if the powers that be in Tallahassee get their way, we're not gonna have a chance to change it. They're just gonna obliterate our ability to deal with it. We're not, we're grandfathering. We'll lose that grandfathering. So enjoy the B and B. That'll be Nextdoor in your house. I know you didn't move here for that. And that's gonna make the festival look like, you know, a great thing. So it's a problem, and we need to come together as a community. If we come together for nothing else this year, okay? I want to see us come together for this, and I need your support. I can't do this alone. I want to see three hundred, four hundred citizens coming together so I can go to talk to Mr. DeSigley, who I've never met, and say, "You can't vote for this." Our citizens, if you do that, aren't gonna vote for you in November. That's the only language these folks understand. And I like Nick DeSigley. He's of my party, and I'll leave it at that. It has nothing to do with party. I'm aligned with, with Jennifer Webb, who's, who's a champion of home rule. She doesn't represent this district. She represents south of here. But she's fabulous, and she actually won an award last year for the League of Cities. So what I'm saying is, is let's pay attention to this, folks. Let's keep our eye on the big prize, okay? It's not about what side of the street we parked on during the garage sale. It's about preserving this. So if we lose this, don't blame us up here, okay? We need to come together as a community. Definitely have to do it. EMO, I said enough about it. It's a very good training course for anyone who hasn't taken it. If you're new, it's very, very prop, it's very beneficial. You see what everyone else is doing all over. It's a three-day course. It is intense, um, but it's well worth spending the time on. And there's an advanced one I know, I'm speaking to Patty, I think we're, Jody and Glenn, I think we're gonna consider doing that. Um, so it's very, very good, very well presented. And, um, basically, that's the issues, and I just want to close on a positive note. I said a lot before. What, I live with June, and everybody knows that, and what she endured for this thing was unbelievable. I don't know why it has to be like this. This was a festival to bring everyone together. It did, despite everything. June has a thing on her phone that says, "Prove them wrong," and boy, did you ever do that. You proved everyone wrong. You did a great job. I've never been in the military, but what is it? Bravo Zulu?
Bravo Zulu.
Bravo Zulu. You did a great job. Congratulations to you and everyone on your group. We have a motion to adjourn.
Someone.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Good night, everyone. Thanks for coming.